That is true.
This doesn't make sense.
Right, it's.
Six o'clock and I'll, uh, that's regular board meeting. School district to order. And we will start with the spotlight. With Ivy doing it on school.
Okay, sounds good. Um, I know, I normally like to work off of PowerPoint and I'll just be speaking today. Um, we're at the halfway point of the school year and so we're ending the first semester, moving into the second semester. At this point, we always do the star assessment, that's our district assessment. Something that's been very helpful as our star data is very much in alignment with our state scores, especially on the forward exam. And so that's going to give us some really good indicators on the improvement plans, how they're working, what we might need to update. This year, the elementary is also doing the fast bridge assessment, which is another set of data. That should give us even more information. Uh, the administrators just met earlier this week to look at um specific literacy data on achieve three thousand. And um, that was be something that we'll continue to look through all those different data points over the next few weeks. The school improvement committee will meet um in a couple of weeks for review that as well. And then I'm excited to present that at the February school board meeting. So that's what our next focus will be. Um, I did want to just give a little reminder that in addition to these monthly meetings and updates we have at the school board. We also have those quarterly meetings from school improvement committee. We also have um quite a few other entities working on this, this goal on this progress. And so um, both um Ms. Burns is working on it through the professional development committee and working on school improvement through curriculum council. Uh, it's also happening in our building teams. We have in school improvement teams at the building level for meeting every other week. Um, and then it's also being integrated into daily and weekly activities are staff meetings, professional learning community meetings. Uh, the one-on-one goal setting and observation that we're conducting. So it's really exciting to have a really comprehensive program in place and we're um, working on strong improvement work um basically every second of every day. Yeah. I did want to give an update on the five areas of focus that we outlined in the previous meeting. Uh, the first one is our test taking protocol. And so this is just a reminder, what this is, is I'm making sure that the scores that we have on our state tests are an accurate reflection of what our students really know. And we have reason to believe that um it may be lower than what our students are really achieving, um especially when we're seeing that day-to-day assessments and when we compare it to the ACT, which was um above the state average. And so we want to make sure our students have all the skills that they need to accurately reflect, reflect what they know. And so the middle school, high school team has done a really great job organizing a variety of strategies and teaching these to students. Both to support their test-taking skills, but also just to support them in everyday assignments, in higher education, in a variety of opportunities. So um, and the work done by that middle school, high school team has also um been connected to the elementary and and sort of translated into what that means at elementary level. And then also means that we're going to focus on this, the schedule for the test taking. I've talked a little bit about keyboarding to ensure students have their writing skills to accurately reflect what they know in writing. Uh, making sure the schedule is communicated ahead of time to families. And that they have a snack and all of those little pieces to the puzzle to make it a really positive test-taking experience and an accurate reflection. So that's one area of focus. That's really.
Can I throw a little something?
Please do, absolutely.
So the high school and middle school did their star testing the last two days. Um, and just a prerequisite look at the data is already starting to look better. But one student in particular in my mind took the math test and sometimes kids don't like taking the math test, so they just kind of like click through it like, oh, I think it's out, I think it's out, I think. So he took the test the first time and he scored pretty low. And one of the teachers saw it and was like, what, what is this? This isn't accurate. This isn't you. This is why we take the test. This is what it's for. And like went through it, kind of went through some of the things that we have talked about at our staff meetings in terms of testing and why it's important, the skills they need. And he was like, okay, okay, I'll, I'll take it again. So he took it again. And he scored in the advanced. So it was a very clear, like, he was down low, so that it goes red, yellow, blue, and then green. So he was low yellow when he took it this first time. And then teacher had a conversation with him about why it's important, all the things that we've been talking about. Here's how we do it. Here's why we do it. Here's some skills. So he was like, oh, okay, I'll do it again to see what I can do and I'll really try. And then he ended up way up here in the green with some of the students that would we would normally expect to land in the green. That's where he was at. And he was like, I'm a math genius. So I think it really is like, it's, it's kicking in. We're talking to them about this. They're just like, oh. And they're starting to see the reason for it. So I thought that was really cool. Like that just happened today. So I was just thinking about it.
Yeah, absolutely. That ownership in the process, understanding the purpose behind it. And it's been really fun to celebrate those victories, lots of great growth and ensuring that information with students and with families. Uh, we know that's a very important piece to this puzzle, but it's not the only piece. And we also do see um some, a trend that students are missing some of those foundational skills. I'm thinking about math facts and um word patterns and things that really would contribute to higher level thinking. And if they're understanding that new concept, they may not have some of those skills or those skills may not be solid enough to really support them with a high level thinking. And so something we've done with foundational skills is we purchased the math toolkits resource. And it's for addition and subtraction as well as multiplication and division. Uh, it's, it's fun because it's game-based and so it isn't a screen-based or technology resource. It's um dice and markers and and kids are playing a game. So it almost can be a social intervention or social support as well. But it's really supported students with that backfluenzy in a really fun, applicable way. So we've now integrated those math toolkits from kindergarten through sixth grade and a big shout out to Jody Maddock, our math interventionist for taking the lead on that. And same thing with our phonics and our word patterns. Um, really supporting students with those foundational reading skills and making sure they have the support to um read at the level that they're at. And that the grade level is at or above, um and they can write, write down um and be at that level as well. And so we have a scope and sequence for what skills are specifically taught at what grade levels. Um, and have even purchased some new resources to support that as well. And we'll continue with that work. Um, so those are two big areas of focus. We've really worked on this past quarter. And if you think about that plan, do, study, act cycle, we have multiple cycles going at the same time. Some of them are very quick. The test-taking one, we're almost done with and we're getting these things in place and we're ready to move forward. Some of these are going to take a long time. Some of them are going to take months to years. Um, as we look at that continuous improvement plan, but those are two we've really zoomed ahead with. Another one we've started to work on is instructional minutes and instructional practices. Uh, we have really fabulous teachers in our district and we have a professional development model that allows teachers to share strategies and resources with each other. So we'll continue that model, improving our instructional practices. And also increasing instructional minutes. At the elementary, we've increased an additional time throughout the day when students are working on those foundation foundational skills. In addition to working on their grade level time. And so it isn't coming in place so that it's in, in addition to it. And both of those are at the student's level. And so students may be working on different foundational skills. And we have the variety of resources to support the variety of needs. Another area that we're working on through curriculum council is curricular resources. And so as you know, we're implementing achieve three thousand. Um, that is some data that we'll be sharing at the next meeting, really exciting to see reading growth um throughout our district. And uh, we also have added achieve math, so another uh resource to support math skills. Um, and then we continue to explore new resources as well. Um, nothing that's going to change, totally change what we're doing. It's going to be in alignment with all of these plans. But you can see in sometimes there are spaces that we need to add some things. We're looking into middle school, high school mathematics with additional resources in that area and a few others as well. And then the last one is work with the standards. And so really focusing in on the grade level standards, our data showing that students are, um, when they're introduced to standards, they're doing very well with them. They're understanding them um and applying them in that context. But when it comes and it circles back the next year or maybe later in that same year, they haven't achieved a level of mastery that it's automatic to them and that they're able to build on those higher level skills with it. And so we're doing some standards work vertically across grade levels and within grade levels to make sure we all have this common understanding of a really deep level of mastery and are supporting students to achieve the level. So those are the five areas of focus that we highlighted at the last meeting and just want to give an update on each of those. You can see some of them are short-term immediate cycles. So when we're long-term, um, the standards work is something that we'll be digging into for quite a while into the future. Um, but we're excited to see the growth we've already seen and look forward to um this next cycle and this next um set of assessments. And I'm just trying to think if there's anything else to wrap that up. Nope, I think, I think we got all the, all the things. I am happy to answer questions.
If you have any questions. This is a process. We need to stop the normal flow of education. There's the academic part, increasing the rigor part. There's the social emotional kids being engaged back in school now for four, five, six months. There's a lot of things that are still being worked on. So it's a balance. Our teachers are doing a masterful job, increasing the rigor. Reemphasizing the academics, but also meeting the social emotional needs of kids who are just getting back into school, just reassociating with friends. Eliminating some of the unsupervised behaviors from not being in a traditional base. So it is a process. So I just want to, you know, that. It's going to take us a little time to begin to disengage, to reengage. But I, I think everyone did a great job. But some students just take a little longer to adjust to being back in school for a long time.
That was actually one of the things I was going to ask is how the socially emotional pieces is put into those areas.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, there's a huge piece of it. And when we can combine those two, like those math toolkits with main games, interactively working on social skills, that's really the ultimate. Um, we have really, I should, I have to give a big shout to the staff, the teachers who've been very creative in the way that we adjust our schedules. When we add on additional time for foundational skills, we're not taking away from outdoor learning or morning meetings or the social times. And so it is a fine line to find that perfect balance. And we know that um all students face challenges, all students have strengths. And sometimes those social challenges, those social strengths are going to play a role too. And that's just something we always have to be really mindful of and in having a comprehensive plan.
And I think part of that too is always continually working on building our culture, making sure their kids are feeling safe, that they're wanted, that they're welcome, that they belong here. Um, so the high school level, we're doing a lot of kind of the just general culture work. We talk a lot about how do you, if a kid is missed for two weeks, for whatever reason, how do you welcome them back into the classroom? What's the reaction they get when they walk at the door, right? The difference between like, wow, nice to see you versus wow, it's so nice to see you. Same words. Totally different welcome, right? So we've been talking about that a lot. We're doing some very intentional stuff based on the YRBS survey that they took last year.
Yep.
Um, there was some pretty astounding facts in there. Um, and so we're going to be just next month, I have it in my board report, I'll talk about it a little bit. Uh, but we're going to be doing with our 10th and 11th graders, the teen mental health first aid training. For, for those whose parents say yes, you're able to do that. Um, and that is, that is, that is a thing that helps them be able to figure out, how do I help a, a friend in an appropriate way if they are going through some sort of mental health challenge? If they're, you know, dropping out of things because they're just not where they need to be, or if they've said, I'm thinking about suicide, what do I do? Who do I talk to? How do I get them help? So they'll be going through that training in early February, which I'll talk a little bit more later. Um, so that is just like, we're not getting rid of that SEL stuff. That's still truly, truly important. It's like Ivy was saying, we're trying to find that balance. How do we work that into the classroom and in some other ways and still be able to push the rigor in the academics that we're working on?
I'm assuming Kathy Lacy's involved with that.
Kathy will say?
Yeah.
Well, she, she hasn't officially, well, she's here, she's been started, but she isn't a part of that, not here. I don't think she's certified to teach the team part of it anymore.
Yeah.
Um, so we have a couple.
But she certainly has the training.
She does have the training in the background. I've, I've been trained in team mental health through the first aid twice. Um, but yeah, she's not, she's not certified to teach that anymore. Um, we have UW extension people coming to teach to the kids. All that stuff. And then I am looking at with one other staff member getting trained to be a team mental health first aid trainer, so that in the future, we don't have to bring somebody to do it in-house and keep rotating it year through certain classes.
My question is, uh, I think, I don't mean to be negative, but um but we know that everyone's doing a really excellent job and I love the creativity going into it. Can you just describe again, like maybe how you're differentiating or, or paying some attention um or how you're paying attention to that pull and push of increase in our academic rigor and learning to learn versus uh learning to take a test and learning to one test.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it comes when like we, we talk about those high-quality instructional practices. So that's that focus area number three. We know that the best instructional practices that are the most effective when it comes to learning are also instructional practices that are trauma-sensitive, that they're supportive of all students, that they're socially, emotionally, behaviorally engaging um of students. And so that's where we work smarter, not harder. Um, there are those practices that are going to really um achieve both. And we always want a balanced approach. And if you can remember that, there's that circle that we looked at before. And there's a tiny portion that was a state assessment. That's a very important piece of who we are. It's an important part of where we're going and where we've been. But the whole rest of that circle is the day-to-day. Those are the posters, those are the presentations, those are the, the papers that they're writing. Um, and all of those things are not in opposition to one another. Those things that they're learning and tested on, on that state test are the same things that they're learning in the garden. They're the same things that they're learning by putting on the plate together. I'm trying to find gym space for the second graders for, for next meeting. So it's, it's cool to see, it's exciting to see when those two things are together and not in opposition competing for the same time.
And I think with regard to what you're talking about, will be the test-taking skills thing that we're building. When we are talking to our teachers about how that works, we are talking to them and showing them and modeling for them, how do you build teaching those skills within your curriculum? And not just a, okay, for next 10 minutes, we're going to work on this test-taking skill. That is nope. So we've talked about that multiple times. How do you embed it within what you're doing? How do you teach those skills to kids without pointing out the fact that you were doing a test-taking skill? Because it is a skill that you need throughout your life, not just for test-taking. So we've, we've worked really hard and, and with our staff to make sure that they understand this isn't a one-time skill that we're just focusing on right now. It's embedded into everything. And as they start getting through it, it's just going to become embedded in what they do every day. And so we don't have to say, this week we're working on this skill or this week we're working on this skill. It's just going to become part of what they're doing. So there, the staff is in the learning process of how can we do that as well? So they're learning as well in this.
And then just the last piece of informational shares. Um, that we talked about data and a lot of time that data means star scores or forward scores or ACT scores. Um, but the data that we're also looking on a daily basis um is related to um achievement in the classroom on those day-to-day activities. It's also related to the number of behavioral incidences or cluster points that we have. Um, and so we're looking at all of those different types of data, teacher surveys, feedback from families, parent meetings, student meetings, and making sure that when we talk about data, we're looking at the whole picture of data and not just, just those, those scores.
Moving on to public comment. Just going through the rules or guidelines. Each person has three minutes to speak. Your time is your time alone and you cannot refer it to another speaker. No personal complaints, please. No direct names or references to people that would be identified through details. If, um, those should be taken care of in a different um mode. If you need to talk about someone in specific, please contact the district office. The board is here to listen. And at the end of public comment, if you're able to address it with, we will, um, or if it's in the uh, within the agenda, we'll address it within the agenda. They feel respectful to each other, to the board. And um if you'd like to talk in the library, please come forward far enough so that the microphone can do up as well as the camera. And then um, if you're in on the Zoom, you'd like to speak, please put your name in the chat. We will start with the library.
So I sent the letter today and had the reasoning behind why the vaccines are not safe and they're infected. Very serious to these kids. So I want you to look after the vaccinated kids because they, they were trying to do the right thing. I, I can have a reader. I'm not very great at reading, but I want you to understand.
In everyday life, people use their own dissenting opinions and making decisions. Your natural instinct might change your decision to pull out into traffic. Dissenting opinions are very effective at saving lives. The strength of our constitutional republic is dependent upon its constant inclusion of dissenting opinions. The guaranteed right of public comments is the proper use of dissenting opinions. For two years now, I have been the dissenting opinion on the direction of the COVID-19 policy. If the board had considered my opinions, Washburn School District would be in a better position than we are today. We could have avoided the improper violation of parents' constitutional rights. We could have avoided the promotion of the COVID-19 vaccines. We could have avoided the health risks of cardiac disease in our children. We could have avoided the dysfunctional, the dysfunction of the natural immune health of our youth. Today, we're in the 11th hour. I come to offer one more dissenting opinion, I asked the Washburn School District. I ask that Washburn School District does not delay in implementing health programs to improve immune health. I sent the board the proof and incidence of vaccine injury. I ask that a public discussion on immune health take place tonight. Its purpose would not be to assign blame. It would rather be an opportunity to develop the strategy for improving health. It would rightly be developed for the vaccine injured. I can assure the board that they would no longer hear my dissenting opinions if their direction were changed to improve health.
That's all. That's how I stopped showing up here. As long as that, we guys got it, but the facts are there and nothing's changing. Uh, John Thomas, resident of Washburn School District. A homeschooler. Uh, listening to the story tonight, this is more uh geared at what we heard about the spotlight. Listening to the story tonight about students testing, the thing that stands out to me is repeat testing. It's been something that's gone on for years. And I was in the school districts, I know how it works. Um, I think we failed our kids with this. If they don't pass it the first time, we can do it again. And we can do it again. And that's been a pop, that's been a practice. As an employer that cleans up other people's mistakes, a retake is not real. We need to stress and enforce that doing our best is always the norm and not the exception. I know there are kids that need extra chances, but that's not the norm. We need to stress that to our kids when we take a test or when we do an assignment. What's the reality of this? If I'm in a practice, if I'm a doctor and I screw up and sorry, I took your lung instead of your heart or whatever, you don't get to redo that. Patient's dead. It's the same way when I have people come to work for me. I, I hire a lot of high schoolers. I wouldn't. They come and they're surprised when they're reprimanded because they've messed something up. I did, I, my job, we feed animals, we feed livestock. And if somebody puts the wrong medication in there or they say, well, supposed to be two pounds, but I put 20 in there, shouldn't be a big deal. And the farmer loses 40 head of animals because we poisoned them. That's a big deal. Pay attention. Do the, follow the directions. So that's when you, when we as a school, when we as teachers, I would encourage you during this time of reset, which really it is. Kids are coming back and learning and you've talked about that and all talked about that. Really push for doing their best every time. And enforce that, that this is, we're taking a test today. Do your best today. This is the one shot we get at this. Do it now. So that way students are prepared when they leave. That's one of our, I think that's our vision statement or our goal to have people prepared to go out into the world. Repeats are not real world. So I would encourage you during this time to push for that right away. Um, one of the other things with that is doing your best gives that student worth beyond self-worth. Self-worth betrays us quite often because I feel good about myself, but I suck at what I do. You know, or whatever. But I feel good about it. Well, that's not real either. Um, you know, a convicted killer could feel good about killing people. But nobody else does. I mean, let's, let's try to pump up their worth and show them that they've done a good job. Thank you.
Any further public comments in the library? It looks like there's one in the chat. Brandon?
Can you hear? Sorry, I didn't, didn't know I could unmute myself. Uh, Brandon Lindy, Town of Barksdale. I am a recent candidate for the school board in the upcoming election this April. I've been active in the board here for almost two years now. During public comments, sending the board letters and emails. And I'm glad to see that we're, we're focusing on the kids again and focusing on learning. I think everyone has admitted and agreed that the way that we had been operating this school district the past two years was a failure, I believe was Dr. Wyatt's words. And I just want to remind everybody that the focus of those five individuals up there that constitute the Washburn School Board is to help the kids. Everyone else in the school has an advocate. The teachers have a union advocate. Parents have the PTA. The job of the board is really to support the kids and as John alluded to, the mission of the school is to try to create students who succeed in the global society. So one kind of disturbing comment that I heard at the last meeting was that, oh, well, we're the best in the Bay Area. Which, I mean, that's great, but we shouldn't just strive to be the best in the Bay Area if we're going to stay, say that our mission statement is to enable the students to enter the global society. We should strive to be the best in the state, the best in the country, the best in the world. So that is why I'm running and why I'm continuing to be involved with the school board is because it's about the kids and the kids need strong advocates on their side. Thank you.
Any further public comments? Um, just to go back. We can't just have a public discussion on health. Tonight.
This is important.
And I'm not saying it's not important, but it's, I can't put it on the agenda. So that can't happen tonight. Just six. Any, do you want to clarify repeat testing in any way?
I think the mission philosophy of the school is different than without medical school. Kids are going to try, because they're going to make mistakes. And our job is to provide multiple opportunities to get the information, to build those skill levels up to that when they do get into that, it's right or it's wrong scenario, they have the foundation. So when we build foundations and education and learning, you want children to take risks. Sometimes they make a mistake. Then you have to work through that process of, okay, this is what you did. This is what you need to correct. So you can learn this, so you can build upon it. So there's a lot of trial in our education that's not as finite as post-school. Because it's developing kids and they're going to make mistakes and we want to correct those. And so they do get multiple, the, the, the main, the main thing is get the knowledge and information. And failing in school in a safe environment is part of our class. I was just mine.
I remember. Any other comments?
I was just going to say children are children and that's how they learn. And that's how adults learn too.
All right, moving on. Financials, we are going to table for this month. They weren't, they weren't quite able to get those covered, so we will move that to next month. Committee reports moving on the long-range planning.
Yep. Um, so long-range planning, we met on Monday. Um, and uh, we had a great conversation in our open discussion. Um, a couple of highlights are like schedules, um, updates to facilities and how we can add things to our like 10-year um, capital improvement plan. There's uh, some like. There's, uh, some like trail opportunities going on, like biking trails within the city of Washburn. And so they brought that up as a, um, long range planning committee thing that if the school is ever, um. Working, just kind of keep in mind, there's a, there's a grant that got approved in the city of Washburn. For a bike park, initial phasing of the bike park, I don't know if it's, if it's a feasibility plan or what they're granting specifically for, but. Um, but anyway, that there are these biking opportunities. Um, that are coming up and they specifically said some of the students were participating in like biking sports is increasing. So that's one of the reasons they got this grant, it's great, anyway. Facilities. And then the curriculum update, um, we got curriculum updates and professional development committee updates. And then, uh, had a great conversation about the middle school, high school feasibility study. I think, uh, some of the highlights from that conversation is that really this is just about phase one. And phase one doesn't tie you in to phase two or any vendor for phase two. Um, so really just looking at it from a, what do we have? And, and what can we do? Or is it?
It took me thirty minutes to explain it, you know, exceptional job, what do you mean, you know?
No, I mean, I.
Yeah, no, that's, this, it's exactly what it's phase one. Assess our current, look like that we have in the middle school, high school. Give us an update on what, what's here, what needs to be done and potential pathways.
Potential pathways forward, yes, right, but it doesn't hold us to any pathways forward. And then that's where the phase two interview, really diving, and so then the board approved a phase two and phase three about. How do we decide the path forward after we have the information about what exists? Okay, lovely. Um, some of the standout conversation from there was, um, an interest in green and sustainable schools. And then in a vendor who, um, felt like they were. They interviewed all of, um, the vendors that came in and toured, um, and. And there were some vendors who really showed a, a different like level of interest, especially in our like. Uh, priorities in green and outdoor spaces, um, solar panels, solar panels and energy use, etc. Um, and then. Uh, and then obviously we wanna be aware of our financially competitive bids. And so there was like three that really stood out there. Um, and, and we talked a little bit about experience in the local area, um, and, uh. And they got another comment about, um. An, another like committee member was just very interested in making sure that, uh, like this first phase one still understood. Our kind of like broader goals as a district. Um, and it seems like there was a firm that, that really stood out in that way. Okay, um, and then we got the same school improvement update that, um, that we heard from in our spotlight.
I, I'd like to dig into that feasibility study. Let's hear what they have to say, but I think I'll do that. When we get down to the individual action item. It's down in. Okay, we'll have a conversation. Okay, moving on to administrative.
Uh, busy time, um, year. In the year, but also now we're starting to really look at, uh, budget staffing. Summer, summer school, extended school year, so. So it's a nice balance between where we are, where we're going, some lot of meetings around that. I need to commend Wayne Gasparini, that is four hundred, so exceptional team. Being a coach, the head coach in girls varsity basketball, getting four wins sometimes in the season is difficult, but. Having the players, the system, the assistant coaches and the parents to support that program over the years. A testament to Dwayne. For our school, so just wanted to commend them for that. MMC, Connie Robuski wrote a grant for, to MMC. And about ten thousand dollars worth of stock, uh, we've been able to receive for both buildings. We have, uh, the, uh, blood pressure cups, stethoscopes, first aid kits. CPR dummy supplies, AED trainers and supplies. Uh, for use in and out of the classrooms for first aid class and CPR classes, so just wanna thank, uh, Connie for seeking out those dollars. And securing those for us as long as it's, uh, for all who are in the health room assistant. To make sure that we get this stuff and it's in the school, so. Good news there, we spent some time the last couple weeks getting ready for the certification of our four candidates, so we had. Um, that was, been certified, I sent all the information to the county. Uh, the order was selected on, uh, the ninth of January. Uh, that was also witnessed and certified and off to the states, we do not need a primary. So I also notified the county that we don't need a primary for this, uh, spring election, so. Just busy talking. Staffing, so you'll see a lot of things in action tonight, so a lot of the long-term subpositions, IA position. Um, have been filled, so, alright, I'm also looking for food service worker, uh, custodial. Later, I know various coaches that are coming up in the next couple months.
Uh, staffing, so we have hired Kathy Friendsless, say she is a retired teacher who's coming to us from. Um, she retired from Ashland at the end of last year. She is coming in second semester as our fax long-term son. Um, she is gonna be a great addition, she has, that, that was her licensure when she was teaching fax and business. So she's coming in and she's really excited to get back into the classroom with kids after being out and kind of seeking some other things and going. Not, I wanna go back in the classroom, so she applied and we have hired her in that position, she's got a lot of experience, she's gonna help us even over the course of this next semester. Begin building that program back up to the things that we are. Hoping that we can get back to and pathways that we can create for kids, leading them towards, um, some post-secondary educational options. Whether it's, um, four-year, two-year, whether looking at apprenticeships, whatever that might be, she's gonna be able to help us begin building those pathways. She's had a lot of really great ideas, even looking at our course manual and saying, ooh, that name for that course is probably. A little bit outdated, we might wanna think about changing that in the future, so things like that have even already started to come up. Um, she's been shadowing Kelsey since the ninth, uh, so she'll be ready to take over once second semester starts. Um, Kelsey will then move into. We haven't completely finalized what she's gonna be doing exactly. Uh, we'll have her working down with Jen Peacock with some of our ID kids who are at kind of a lower level. Of look stages of learning in their, in their careers, so she'll be doing some work with them for a few hours a day. Um, we'll be using her as a sub in the building, cause we know we've been having a lot of sub issues. Um, she'll be, if she's not needed for something that day, she'll be doing tutoring or going into classrooms and helping out, so. We haven't exactly finalized what she is gonna be doing, but she is now an additional person that we have that we can use in a plethora of ways. Um, and we just on. Tuesday morning, I was like, what day was that, Tuesday morning, we have finally filled our full-time IA position for the high school. Um, it is somebody who has been in IA for about three years already, she did a lot of one-on-one work in her previous employment. Um, so she will be getting with us on the twenty-fourth of January. So I'm pretty excited that we're gonna have, we're gonna be pretty well stocked, we're gonna be able to start doing some things that we haven't been able to do. Because we just haven't had the numbers to be able to do it, so that is, I'm pretty excited about that, so. Uh, moving on from that, we had some very successful parent-teacher conferences over the last month or so. In the middle school and the high school, so much so that they, uh, are repeating them or did repeat them last night to have more parents coming in. Uh, and then the middle school is doing a real quick open house on the seventeenth from four to five, just to be able to. Because that semester they are switching like half and half, so we'll be switching their sets of teachers. So it allows those parents to come in and then meet the new teachers that the kids will be having second semester, uh, so that's pretty exciting. Uh, we touched on professional develop, development a little bit when we talked about school improvement, things that we have been talking about. Um, outside of what does in-service look like at the start of the next year and moving forward, some things we've talked about is. When we're focusing on the improvement of our math and our reading, how are we helping our staff learn how to embed some of that into their. Curricula, how do we get them to understand best practices of teaching those, and so what does that look like in terms of professional development? After the school, like after school PD, or what does it look like into the summer, um, some other things that looking at, how do we? Get some. Best practices that also incorporate SEL into them as a, as a dual way of teaching in a classroom. Instead of being like, well, we're focused on rigor and now we're building community and then we're focused on rigor and now. How do we do that where it's combined and embedded in each other, so we're looking at some professional development and what, what that potentially could look like. Uh, moving forward, we are also looking at doing some professional development for all staff around special education. And some of the procedures that need to happen and what needs to happen, Dr. Wyatt is working with, um, Betsy Carrier and CISA twelve to kind of. Flesh out what that's gonna look like and when that's gonna start, it could start as early as the spring. Um, but for sure going into September and October next year for all staff. So those are some kind of big things that we're working on for the professional development, big things coming, lots of learning for our staff and for ourselves. Um, so that's exciting. At the high school, middle school specifically. Second semester rolls around, we are doing the bell schedule change where we are shifting middle school lunch back and then shifting high school into one lunch. So our middle school kids are not having brunch every day, they get to actually have lunch, uh, so their lunches will be at eleven thirty-five. So eleven thirty-ish for the middle school and then high school will be at about twelve thirty, um, so that, that will be good, I don't have to worry about them. Not eating breakfast because lunch is early and then starving through the rest of the day, so that'll be helpful with them. We are coming into semester finals next week, which is. Starting, you're starting to feel it in the building, kind of that stress is going up because finals are coming. Um, we are running, uh, two days of block schedules, it'll be even classes the first day, second class is the second, or second. Even classes, the second day, um, and they'll be in block classes, so they'll have lots of time to either. Focus in on the presentations and projects that they're giving, um, if they are taking assessment, they'll have time to really dig in beforehand and do some reviewing. And then taking that test, um, whatever it is that the teachers have planned for them, they're gonna have a good block of time to be able to finish that out. And finish strong, so, um, the teachers are excited about that, I'm not really sure how the students are feeling about it quite yet, it's a block of time, so they gotta. You know, figure out how to work with that, but, so that'll be coming up next week. So there's a little bit of stress, school improvement committee, we talked about a lot already, so I'll kind of pass over that. The teen mental health first aid training, that is going to be February sixth, eighth and tenth. For the tenth and eleventh grade students. We decided not twelfth grade, just because we are now going into second semester, it's gonna get really busy for them, they're gonna get stressed out. If we start moving things around on them and adding things to them, we just don't wanna pile on stress. Um, so we're gonna focus on tenth and eleventh grade and it's gonna go on kind of a rotating schedule for those three days. So that they aren't missing any particular class more than once in that week's schedule. So we're working out the details of that, uh, working with UW Extension to, to get that all kind of finalized, so once that, that's done or. Very, very close to being done, I'll bring more information back in next school, we're meaningful, kind of what that looks like and how that's gonna run. Um, scheduling and put together kind of a small team to look at bell schedules for next year and what's gonna work best for us, is our eight-period day? The way we have it set up, working the best for what we need for our school improvement, for what the kids need, are they being successful in it? Do they feel like this is too stressful, is there another way that we can kind of switch? Um, and so we're looking at a number of different potential bell schedules, not changing the start, you know, like the timeframe of the day. Um, potentially moving the bell forward a few minutes, just so we can add some more minutes into our time, cause we start pretty late in the day. It'd be nice to add a few more minutes to our schedule, so that's on the, on the table for discussion. Um, but right now we're just looking at potential bell schedules, eight-period day, seven-period day with advisory every day. Some sort of modified eight-period block, we're just in discussions about that, see what that will look like. Um, then we'll bring it to the staff, see what they think, we'll get student input, we're putting together a survey for them. Um, so really just trying to figure out what do we think is gonna work best for, best for us, and then committing to that for a solid three years. To really be able to see like, is this working, you could do it for one and people are gonna, no, I really like it, no, I don't like it, but we don't really know, cause you're only in it for a year. Second year you start to get into it, third year you're really into it, and then we'll be able to see, is it working the way we want it to, or do we need to adapt, so. Um, that, that commitment is gonna take some stress off of shoulders because they know they don't have to worry about changing every year of the staff and of the kids, so. Um, other than that. Sources of strength last in December, uh, did a, uh, training with kids, I think they trained. Thirty, twenty-five or thirty, I can't remember exactly, six through twelfth grade students for sources of strength, sources of strength is a. It started out as a suicide prevention program, but there's a wheel that has eight different spokes about healthy things in your life, healthy activities. Um, access to medic, medical stuff, access to mental health, mentors, there's all these different little wheels. Parts of the wheel, it looks like a trivia thing is what it really looks like. And so we had a whole bunch of kids training that, and so they are starting to build different activities to be able to get kids out and interacting with each other. And being able to create some positive friendships and healthy activities, they've supported a, uh. Free coffee, not coffee, hot cocoa bar, um, on the last day before Christmas break, and they're looking at trying to figure out some sort of like. Tournaments they can do after school to get kids out and playing together and, and interacting, so they're starting to do a lot of really great stuff, so it's become really great. Aspect of our school that is, is beginning to build, so, uh, I think that's most of what I've got for the month.
Just a question, you had mentioned that students, they choose to, or I'm not quite sure, the, the, the mental health first aid.
Yeah, so what's gonna happen is, um, we're gonna send out what's called a passive, or passive permission slip. I think that's what it's called, the camera, exactly, but it, it'll go out and, and what'll happen is if parents choose to not allow their students to do it. Then they'll send it in, rather than trying to collect them all, yeah, 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 it's, if you say no, sign it, send it back, otherwise they're all going in. So we'll send that out, probably. Obviously either the end of next week, although that's crazy with finals, or very, very early following. So that we can get that in and see, see where we're at in terms of participation.
I had a question, have you and, and the scheduling committee checked into the research on how high school students do a lot better with a later start?
Yes, I know all about that study, other committee has it, I know about it, yes, for sure. Um, it is something that we could look at, a lot of times where we, where we come into barricades for that. Is dealing with the, with a bus company and their transportation and how they are available throughout the day. Um, but it is definitely something, there is research on it, I can bring it to the staff, I know the research on it too, it is very beneficial for them to start later in the day. Um, just because of their brain development, but we would have to dig into that and really see like, how is that even a possibility with? Bus schedules, elementary school busing, with middle school busing and all of that kind of stuff, we'd really have to dig into, look at how that would work.
Alright, uh, one area I forgot to highlight during the school improvement spotlight was the importance of PLCs or professional learning communities. And not only because this is where a lot of the work is happening during these team meetings during the week. But also because this is sort of how the work happens, it's one thing to outline it on a paper and a PowerPoint, that's another thing to have to put it into practice. And so, so we actually have some little small PBSA cycles for just improving our PLC process. As you know, this has been a goal of ours and an ongoing process to improve and, um, to advance ourselves as a professional learning community. And so, uh, we are fine-tuning that process and, and shared facilitation of those meetings, common agendas. Ensuring teachers have the time and space and resources to do that, and so that has been an ongoing goal and sort of a, um. Renewed focus as well. Um, other things happening at the elementary, we have the winter concert at, and this, of December, it went really well. Uh, we did use a new format where each, uh, class goes at a specific time, so allows families or community members to come maybe just for their child. And for one particular grade, or they can stay for the whole time if they want, it also reduces some of the crowding. Uh, uh, more parking was available and just overall was a really fun concert and, and a big shout out to Lisa Larson and all the hard work she put into that concert. As well as for everybody who helped make it possible, so it's pretty exciting. Uh, we do have a report cards going home soon, so the end of the second, uh, quarter is coming to a close here, and so we'll be sending those report cards out. One thing we're looking at is we do really like the format of our report cards, um, but we're looking at a program that maybe replicate that same format. But would be, um, a little bit more efficient for teachers to use and easier and more user-friendly for families to access, so we're exploring that option a little bit. I do wanna give a thank you to WCEF, Washburn Community Education Foundation, we received a grant for ice skates at the elementary. And those ice skates are now in district. Uh, we have the ice rink set up and we're, um, flooding it and freezing it. So we're hoping that. Within about a two weeks span, we will have students out there ice skating. We do have a P T O event coming up in February. I think it's called the Snowflake Spectacular. And we've got ice skating and sledding and, um, indoor crafts and all kinds of fun stuff happening. As well as winter fest. As you know, we have our fall fest, winter fest and spring fest since we can utilize those spaces. Uh, and I think the kids are really excited about it. Aside from that, we are thinking a little bit, it's jumping from ice skates to summer, but we're thinking a little bit about summer when it comes to both summer school and. Cast Care Kids, our childcare program in the summer. And so I know, um, Shandra Ping will be, uh, connected with curriculum council about summer school and has lots of exciting ideas. About that. And then the, um, Cast Care Kids program will continue to offer and just expanding that. And that's a continuing process that's continuing to grow. So we're excited about that. Um, we talked a little bit about a possible four K survey, getting a little bit more data on expanding the four K program. It is a need we're hearing from families, from community members. We're seeing, um, potential benefits in the education system. And really something that, um, is exciting and that we're looking into getting more information on. And I think aside from that, we already called the, the school improvement committee, curriculum council is, uh, chipping away. At our, uh, curricular resources and, uh, communicating our standards to all families, making sure that's really accessible. And of course, reviewing the courses and critical resources for next year.
Those are the consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes. Or it's just to approve the consent.
And we'll do approve the consent agenda.
Any discussion? I'll just note that after this community. Structure of the minutes will change. We won't have quite so much detail. Considering. Available. Website.
Yep. Change the website so the recording meetings are there. That's where I got the locations.
All crew, all in favor? Me opposed. Motion carries. Onto discussion items, um. Legislative advocacy. Currently Governor Peters is doing some listening sessions, um, regarding the budget. I did listen in last night, um, in the education section and there was quite a bit of discussion about. Funding early, um, child. Basically is, was last thing. Just that there needs to be more funding or. Birth to four-year-old funding. Oh, it's just not. Sustainable. In another state right now. That ones, there was a. Big group of people lined up and they were ready to take that on and they live in the education segment of that. Big stress on. That once the childcare counts. Disappear, there's going to be some issues. That's the plan we, we are, we're able to raise the rates with. Once that goes away. There's just a lot of push to keep that going. Um, but also to defer how to help with. Funding insurances, insurance for workers. Also, I talk about kids. The kid get ahead for, for money for mental health in the classroom. A lot of support for that. And also discussion on increasing aid for education. In schools. The otherwise, the committee members for education are finally gathered and. That is all that's really in the legislative section.
It's kind of thing after the governor gives the state of the state. It starts to pull out some initiatives, possible legislation, budget. And then it all starts to go there. So we're going to throw that trial and run out. I think it's depending where the city is. Probably more activity after that's done. The W A S B convention is another spot where they throw things out slowly and not as quick, but just getting information out. And then getting feedback on the next several months and then they'll start doing it.
The only other thing I put in this section is, um. The school board magazine that we get, which, um, it's monthly or quarterly, but it's all about which that. See and how to run, how to run your board. Not, not being very red, um, but I'm. Not, I can't say credit for it because it's been operating this way since I've been on it. We do do. Most of those bullet points of recommendations that have your, um, board being active with the legislation. So I'm not, I'm not getting that.
Get the code, check that you're being upset, make sure you are.
Nice to have this morning meeting. He's a twelve update.
Um, Cisa twelve was in the process of conducting superintendent searches for two school districts and will be starting a third. Um, C S A's statewide network will host the breakfast for the board of control members at the school board convention. Um, the building update, border control approved a resolution to purchase a building located at four hundred Lake Shore Drive. East is the Hickman care practical building in Ashland at a cost of six hundred thousand dollars. It is to be divided equally among seventeen school districts at thirty-six thousand dollars per school. Um, the cost can be split across three years or paid one. Uh, Cisa twelve will require thirteen or seventeen school boards to approve. This resolution in order to finalize the purchase.
Provided information, uh, for shared drive. For that, it's on the action. So the board voted on it in the past, that building project fell through. They now have another facility that they like to purchase. That needs to be done, I believe, this month or latest February, but Nick was hoping that it would be on, so I put it out.
It's a much smaller building than what they're currently in. And it's what they're needs, yes. They're, they're going to, um. It, it's been slowly changing throughout the years and I wish I'd seen so. We used to do a lot of hosting of in-house trainings. And that's slowly kind of because of Zoom and everything virtual. Has changed the way they use the building. So now it's, it would be more efficient to run smaller.
And then what they're planning on doing is like using like the hotels. For hosting conferences and stuff like that.
But what about like the therapists and, uh, special ed people and the teachers, all the people that are. Hired by, are they all different classes?
Well, not everybody has a space. We have like a central location. They don't like that. They have a lot of, a lot of them are right in the school districts.
Yeah.
Depends where they're located.
If you got a lot of them, that's good.
Um, do you know if there's been any schools that have approved it or disapproved it at this point now?
I'll find out tomorrow, but as I think we're one of the first ones. I don't remember the last in three or four. Who didn't vote or voted against it last time, but for various different reasons.
There was three, I think. I mean, thirteen of seventeen, yes. And then you said that Cisa twelve is doing three different, um, searches for. Administrators, are they all in the Cisa twelve district or are they?
And back to the building thing again, I did bring up again. To, uh, how about getting some kind of reimbursement back when the, if the, when the building sold, your building? And. I kind of think that it's going to be. Decided by the board. C S A board. Um, so I'm hoping that, yes, something will come back depending on what we get for that building.
Might take a while to solve.
It may, but you never know.
You never.
In the meantime, it could be a liability, but I'm sure there's still going to be some. Monies that will be needed for. Yes, no, and like in one way, well.
Or maybe it's like he's so much longer.
Oh, yeah. But the people that are renting the old section. They're already starting to move out. So. It isn't pretty good.
That is listed as an action item or the option to approve the resolution. Funding over three years, approve the resolution one month some. You probably want the three years.
Moving on to the Washburn Educators Council. A report from the Washburn Educators Council in our, or the evidence. In the discussion.
Actually, I can tell me a little bit about the teachers being present in the, during the cold days. I was quite sure without what you're talking about.
I think we probably, I need a little more information. I don't think that's come to communication council yet. So we'll have to, we have not had a chance to talk specifically about. The report with them because we don't.
I'm assuming it means like if schools called off because it's still cold that they want the teachers to report anyway?
On a third or any snow day after two.
Okay.
If we have a cold day. The past discussion, practically, we've never had it, but if we ever had, the staff would come in on a cold day, but not on. A winter danger travel day. But we'll work to that with Rick and Aaron.
So this, in this letter, they're bringing it up for a discussion in the plan is for administration to talk about.
Yeah, we haven't, I, I haven't.
Aaron, if you want to join in on, if you have anything to add at this point, you're able to.
Alright, thanks. No, I don't have anything to add, especially for a conversation.
We were close on snow day number two and three, but we just.
I said, yeah, we were close. And I guess the fourth paragraph about. Inclusive language displays, it does seem like that's a discussion that's in, in progress as well. Otherwise. Thank you. And it's great to have this communication back and forth. I don't see a lot for us to turn.
So, and, and it's not expected if it's a little bit fun to live in. If there was questions or.
Thank you. Uh, the last item in discussion is the W S A S B resolutions. It's something out in mail format, um. There was just a couple that. So how this goes is I'll be going down to Milwaukee to represent, um, our district. And if I, if we want to comment or vote one way or another on any of these amendments, um. We are able to, I, I, I would either represent, represent them. Most of them, I feel like. There's, there's a lot of just small changes that make sense or are. Not controversial, um, in, in my mind, um. The ones that I really, I did. For me, I thought the, um, the big ones that I really wanted your guys' opinions on were the. The licensure. Through the repealing, recreate, um, for like temporary certifications. Because of teacher shortages, creating pathways for licensures, um. That provided that can, that you just have to have a bachelor's degree and are qualified to be in a classroom and to be able to teach. Something and not have to have. Specific education in it. To me, I mean, I just can't imagine if someone's like. You don't have to be a dentist, but you can just be, if you, you know.
I said, uh, we'll tell whatever the commercials.
Yeah, like I know about, yeah, there's teeth in the mouth and I can probably take care of it. You know what I mean? Like it just, I, I don't know. Yeah, um. If the wording here.
Well, it is not, it does also include they have to. Um, demonstrate by appropriate experience, knowledge and skills in the subject area. And or content area. So we wouldn't have so many that has a bachelor's degree. Science, you know, teaching. You know, English or something. When you're getting desperate for a teacher, you're getting desperate for a teacher. And I think. That that whole alternative, um, licensing is a problem because then it. It, it doesn't hurt. And I don't mean to die. That sounds bad, but it doesn't hurt because you get, you can get somebody. You just need a warm body to fill in there. And then that's not a good, that's not good for kids.
That's what I'm worried about. It's not doing our kids a service to like. Decrease what the qualifications are needed to be a teacher. And I mean, really what I feel like we need. Is more support for our schools, more support for our teachers, more incentive to be a teacher. More incentive to make teaching a respectable career that people want to go into. I guess.
But if you're on, if you're on the hiring side of it and you need a warm body, you need a warm body. And that's, it's unfortunate that that's where we've gotten to, but that's what we've gotten. And it's not good for education. And I think if we allow it to happen. We're not helping, we're hurting, it's helping for the immediate problem, but it's not helping.
But also hurt that. It also hurts moving the profession forward.
Right.
Um, the argument should be on the other teacher preparation programs, incentives for teacher preparation programs, making the profession. Attractive financially for a career, people can get into because. Right now, if you go the other way, you're going to drive salaries, benefits, everything down.
Right.
Versus taking it from a different angle and driving it up. Now, the alternative licensing for someone, I have, I've had several experiences where we had someone who was an engineer. Retired from engineering, wanted to get in public education. She had degrees in chemistry and physics and. Worked in the science department in my previous district. That's a good match for an alternative role. You have the solid education, you have that experience, that's worth about official. But just to find somebody, to put them into a place to give them a license to teach. I, I wouldn't advocate or speaking up against that.
And don't the alternative pathways also though include a degree in education? Like, isn't it just a different way to get a degree? Do they not have a degree at all?
Hence, in some areas in, um. Technology, education, business, education, family consumer science, work experience versus degree is also something that you can license to do. So you don't need to be good.
Yeah, I could be a business.
Teacher. Probably pretty good. But I'm just saying that.
But yeah.
But some schools. Desperate time, they look and they'll just like, we'll put somebody in. It might not be the right person.
The other thing I hear from. People, I mean, I don't know. I'm, I'm kind of looking for your guys' experience with it, but it's like, I know of people that have gone. To school for education in a different state and just don't have, like, like, it seems like Wisconsin's licensure. Requirements are pretty thinnicky when it comes. So, so is there like. We're allowing for licensure of teacher, people that don't have. we're allowing for licensure of teacher, people that don't have teaching degrees, but for people with teaching degrees, we're making it very difficult to get licensed.
Oh, exactly. If you're, if you're from our state.
Yeah.
If you're licensed social worker in the state of Minnesota, you cannot work in the state of this.
Well, I think the licensure has to do with the coming years. I know from California, New York, you have to have five years before you can get teacher licensure. So when I came here, just when I came here, there was no problem because I could go anywhere with that. But in other states, it doesn't require that. But you, so people who only had four years.
Education.
Yes, would have to take additional classes in Wisconsin. But I wanted to speak to the fact that just because you have experience and some background in a specific subject, doesn't mean you know how to teach. You know, because in teacher training, they also try to encourage, you know, what to do in this situation, what to do in that situation.
Lots of abandonment.
Yeah, so I think that's been overlooked.
Yeah, and I know they're talking about the, the reading test. And that I think is. It, it, it can be a problem. Because I know people who really had a hard time taking the test.
The competency exam.
Yeah. And are excellent teachers. But you know, there's some testing anxiety or there's a number of things. They know, they know what they're doing, but they couldn't pass the test. And that doesn't make sense.
So you would be a supporter of the
An alternative way of getting through that one.
Okay.
But I think it's all, it's all a piece of the licensing. You know, all of those different hoops that they make people jump through and get through, which you know, I mean, for a good teacher, it, it's all worth it, but if you're, you're getting somebody up the street who doesn't know how to teach and sticking them in there because it's a warm body, that's a problem.
Maybe. If we need to have something like that, there needs to be more, there needs to be more requirements there. Education. Was there anything else that jumped out at anyone?
The unemployment one jumped, don't let me. Unemployment Resolution twenty-three eleven. Where people who are reassigned from a district or a CISA. And if they move closer to their district. Then they're not eligible for working or the unemployment compensation. And I wasn't. If they resign from their position. And have a reasonable assurance of continued employment. What reasonable assurances?
Are specific for. They have.
I mean, because, because reasonable assurance doesn't mean it's assigned contract. And so they're going to back, and, and you know, and I think that they're, that's the way to hold people. You know. Do something saying that there's a reasonable idea that they might back. And I'm thinking, how often is that going to happen?
Right.
May I ask you anything?
Aaron? Uh, I don't think we can in this segment, sorry. If they, am I correct? The writer?
Yeah, that's open for.
No, we can't.
Well, I, I'll make a motion to allow Erin to speak. If this, you know, pay answer the question.
I, the last W S A, W A S P, you can follow the rules, which is really recommended in telephone.
So. Then I will resend my.
Nothing against Erin. Um, the other one that you know, in like that was highlighted for me was the Resolution twenty-three fourteen. It's the one that Brandon Lundy wanted us to be against the to, to oppose the use of like basically what it's saying is that the federal government in this, in that instance, it was the agricultural department linked that schools needed to not discriminate by sexual orientation or a base of gender or being able to use school programs for, and I was saying this very well, but for the, for the food program. And so what, I mean, what I'm, what this is saying is that they oppose that the federal agency can impose mandates on local school districts for local funding without as guidance, instead of having like a regulatory process, maybe a policy, but my understanding is that it, it's already law that we can't discriminate on the basis of sexual orientation or gender identity, so it's kind of redundant in what, what it's saying. So I guess I'm a so it, I guess if I'm going to speak towards this, it, it's okay that the federal government can't make mandates that are actually just, that are guidance on like withholding money for the for schools, but if it's already federal law, then it it's like there's an exception that, that's, that's an underlying exemption from this resolution. Does that make sense? Am I saying that right?
I, I think, I think. So if I'm understanding you correctly, in, in part of the rationale for this particular resolution, it said dramatic changes or expansions should go through this other process. What you're saying is this is not dramatic change, this is already a law.
Right.
This is just a way to enforce a current law.
Right.
Okay, so if.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if, if you interpret it that way, and that, that's a pretty good argument and makes sense to me to interpret it that way, then then it's hard to like the, the resolution makes sense, but the rationale behind it doesn't necessarily support the resolution. So that, that makes it feel a little bit. Think you're off balance.
Does anybody sit that could speak right now have any other feelings about that?
It's kind of a double negative way of looking at it, you mean to me. If you don't do something, then we're going to punish you by doing this, which might not have anything to do with this, but. And, and they, and I've heard of that before, prior to this, that you're, you're, you're going to do something, then you know, that's the way that they can kind of control you and start taking away your funding.
Isn't that always?
I mean, would you think the same way of it if they said it was? You know, if, if you are, if you allow kids with, you know, differences in their gender identity and sexual orientation. You deny them that right to have that. And if you allow them that right, we're going to take away your food service. You, you, you know what I'm saying? You know, so it's what it is that they plan to do here is protecting the right, but what if they weren't protecting the rights? So I think, you know, the, you, that's the basis of that, so you want them to be able to use that. Either do it our way or we're taking away your funding.
Right, so this resolution is saying that there should be a formal federal renaming process before.
They do that.
And I think that the way that the resolution reads is that, it's just that the like rationale, like it may be a little controversial. But like you're saying, you could just switch two words around and not the rationale isn't controversial anymore, it's controversial in an opposite way.
Right.
Right, so rationale is what it is, sure, but the resolutions like aside from this idea between should the federal government be able to enforce a law through a guidance document? Or not? And I, I mean, I don't know. You, you think that it would, but like you're saying, it might open a little bit more gray to to if the law already exists, why do you need to make it more gray? So. So I guess, I mean, I don't know, I think I guess I would support the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Our resolutions.
Um, can you, will you still take some feedback in email?
Yeah, absolutely.
Like I couldn't quite read through it regarding the the rationale between striking the some of the vouchers stuff, you know, there's, there's quite a few resolutions regarding vouchers. And and then I didn't quite get through them all, but it'd be interesting to kind of dive into that a little bit more. I don't know, what did, what were your impressions with some of those? The one is, I think it was twenty-three. There's no state program to provide state funding to private schools. So now there is a state program to provide funding to private schools for students with disabilities.
When I read this, it sounds, I mean, it just basically sounds like this language is outdated in that in the Resolution twenty-three oh eight. That really. So now is that, I'm going to ask Janet and Dr. Wyler, is there funding? So at the time that that resolution was written, there is says there's no state program to provide funding to private schools in return for them providing special education services to pupils with disabilities. So now if a student goes to a private school, is there state funding to provide that's education? So, so this, it's just saying, let's just take away this resolution because there's new, new. Thanks, everyone. I'll let you know how it goes. Moving on to individual. I think I'll just say, there's quite a few tonight, so I'll just say, like, number one, someone to make the motion. We'll get a second discussion. Number one.
I make a motion to approve the Vina Anderson as the Assistant. A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two.
I'll make the motion to approve Heather Dubeck as a district financial assistant.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Number three.
I'll move to go to approve Bailey Davis as the long-term sub for first grade.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Number three. Oh, four, sorry.
I move to approve Sierra as a long-term sub for parquet.
A second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five.
I'll make the motion to approve Laura Tulowitzki as the limited term instructional assistant at the elementary school. A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Hi. Number six.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of two new floor being machines for your equipment.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Hi, any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven.
I'll make the motion to approve the new high school courses of fine communication from the computer science A, science fiction and fantasy and nature and variable writing.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? They just look like exciting courses and like they'd be engaging rooms, it's great to see. And it looks like some of the, some of your teachers are reading a form, which is exciting. All in favor?
Alright.
Hi. Number eight.
I move to approve Kathy Krenzle's A as a long-term substitute for family and consumer science.
Any discussion? All in favor? Hi. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine.
Make a motion to call for voter on determination of special education in regular spaces, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Do you make a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that it's a motion to approve, not limiting regular or special institutions.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor to approve to not limit special education in regular spaces for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I just repeated it, so it was clear.
Second.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number ten.
Uh, I move to approve the contract with Myron Construction for the middle school, high school, phase one.
Any discussion?
Is that where you wanted to hear?
Yeah, I was just, I'm curious, um, if there were. Just eh, like this, you were, you were talking about how Myron, I think Myron must have been the ones that looked a little bit more in depth to the agree, the environmentally conscious.
They really were, and they've done, their body of work is more extensive than the other companies. They have specialists in those areas, they're not just talking about doing it, they've actually built schools around those practices. So when they come in to do the feasibility study and they interview Mr. Austin and his aquaponics lab. They'll have an experience with that, they'll know what the capabilities are and what he would like to have done in that space and then give us feedback. The others would probably, I mean, they all could probably do it. Myron has the experience doing it with their practices, I mean, page nineteen of their proposal, they map out everything and done in sustainable practices. They're also telling me about if they did get to a phase two or a phase three. Although it'd be more about what their company would do, then they wouldn't build a robot, so they had the most experience.
And then I guess just in the discussion that long range planning, was there much concern, like? I'm kind of just curious what the discussion would like around, was, is it like a thirteen, fifteen votes from Myron or was it like?
No, and they still even, there was not even a formal vote, I'm like, what do you think? One of the incidences at that meeting was just like, some people had like read through them all and other people did not get a chance to read through them all. So we did have some feedback this week. I got a little bit, I got one feed, email feedback this week that was pretty much in congruence with what, what the conversation was. Green, sustainable and paying attention to like Washburn's unique needs. And so it was, it was their experience that that company, like even in just like the walkthrough, just had like a a unique interest. A unique interest different than some of the others, we thought that might be good for, especially the space one, or just kind of the first lines of communication. Um, so that was what I got, did you get any other emails this week? Yeah.
I did, I did get some feedback from a member who read through later.
Yeah.
He was in agreement with, you know, that sustainable view, that educational component having ended phase one was very important for a company that has that.
And then my other question was that I saw Dravand was on their list of previous projects and. Um, I had talked to Dr. Wyler about it, but some seemed like they were positive, have you heard anything else from the community, like? Like, any negative?
I think for the phase one, I think, um. Oh, I think there was a couple that said, oh, we did a phase one for the school, but then like, you know, they like, they said for other things. Um, I had like, just word of the community, like the. The phase two and three, um, for like another school district, they're like, oh, we're so happy with this vendor, but I would assume that for phase two and three, we might invite. Two ven- two vendors to a meeting, yeah, and there's a more um dive, like more in-depth like subcommittee. That's going to be doing that work, of course. So, so there's a general like agreement that, okay, we've got a strong recommendation um from our administrative administrators, and we, we agree with that.
I reached out to Angie Buck, who's getting some ideas, because when we, after we get by phase one, we get the feasibility study. She's going to put together that committee, I'll give us phase two, three, look like, because most high school staff. And students and community. Whatever company, whatever we decide. Those companies that will come and then spend a lot of time with everybody. Good feel for what you want to stay.
I did appreciate that on Myron's handout, and it's like, they're very like, this is how we involve everybody, and this is the timeline, and this is probably overlaps, and. I, I mean, obviously, it's probably not going to go exactly as they say, but it was, it was nice to see all the parts that they're thinking of.
I've worked with two of your companies. Myron, pretty much. What they say, with not a whole lot of change workers added to it. Again, having that nice relationship match, I think we just felt that.
Um, all in favor? Motion carries. Number eleven.
I move to approve CISA twelve building resolution.
Discussion.
Uh, do we want to include a three-year payment? Addendum to that, or is this? I don't think so, do you?
No, we'll just make that a, if it's a.
Oh, you just make that. Yeah, okay, we just think.
Are they excited about it?
Yes. It's perfect without having to do a lot of remodeling inside.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve.
I move to approve Haley Trot as the instructional assistant at the high school.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Number thirteen.
I move to approve Kenzak as the member of the long range.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Um, your turn. I have, I have one thing I want to say. Is it all right? You'll find out. I just. I I just wanted to commend um Dan Schick on his work in food service. Um, he was um. He had the state inspector come in, or not a state, sorry, Beaufort County Inspector come in, and he did not get one check on either kitchen. And was complimented on his cleanliness and organization of both kitchens. So that's.
Yeah, she told him that she has never seen that clean up kitchen in any school.
And I can attest to that.
It's amazing.
That's great.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Yeah, no further action items, but there's a dirt.